Okay. Good evening and welcome to December's public hearing for the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals, December 15th. Let's begin with the pleasure of allegiance. If we may all stand please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a...I'd like to move and approve of the minutes of the August and September meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Okay. We have a new public hearing for the Coke...cock? I'm sorry. Twenty-six Hyler Drive. I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you want to come up here or want to sit?
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole deal.
I'll let the professional voice take the...
Tell us...tell us your names.
Stephen Koch.
Stephen Koch.
Laura Koch.
Welcome. Welcome. You're in the yellow house on the hill.
On the hill.
Yes.
What a view.
Okay. Tell us about your project.
Um, well, we want to have a better communication with the outdoors from inside our house. And right now, we have an expansive view on a slope, but we can only use a 10-foot by 17-foot balcony, and that's pretty much it, with no egress outside, so we'd like to put a staircase from out of that, the other side of the house. And we also are going to expand the terrace across the entire back...oh, sorry. We're going to expand the deck across the back of the house, so we have some more usable outdoor space.
Okay. Okay. So, to do that, you need a variance.
Correct.
Tell us about that. You need...you are too close to one of the...what, to the side?
From what I've been told, the setback when the house was built was 20 feet, and one part of the house is 21 feet from the lot line, not knowing that the setback had been changed to 25 feet. The design of the staircase violated the 25-foot. It comes down to 22 or 21 and 10 inches.
Okay.
So, it...I mean, I'm approaching this as a safety feature in a way, because right now, the house only has one egress from the main floor, which is out of the front door. We...and the other is through the basement.
So, no egress on the first floor going to the west?
Uh, that would be the west.
So, out to the deck, but the deck isn't...like, there's no staircase going down. You'd have to jump.
Okay. And it's a very steep property.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, the property, it goes down probably 60 to 80 feet down into the...down into the valley, so the whole...
There's no staircase.
Yeah. I mean, the whole idea is just to...there's really no backyard, so by expanding the deck in the back and having access from the deck to get to the backyard just seems to make sense as far as utilization of what we can, you know, what we have.
Good. Questions?
I don't have any.
Counsel?
Um, I don't think so. I think the application was thorough, straightforward what you want, why you want it. It's a modest request.
Yeah, that's very part right. It's a staircase. I mean, that's sort of how we were trying to keep it simple.
Okay. I see no other public people from the public here. We've notified them. We've not received any written notices?
We have not.
Okay. I would then entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I believe we have a motion here. Would you read that, please?
Resolution to grant an area variance, Stephen and Laura Koch, 26 Hyler Drive, Hyde Park, New York, December 15th, 2022, resolution number 22-22Z. Whereas the applicant, Stephen and Laura Koch, have submitted an application for an area variance to extend an existing deck and construct an outdoor staircase at the northwest corner of property located at 26 Hyler Drive, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel number 133200-6066-04-744119-0000, in the historic overlay zoning district and the waterfront district, and whereas the project is depicted with measurements and a sketch prepared by firm Synergy Design, completed September 14th, 2022, and whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from zoning law section 108-5.15 to permit a side yard setback of 21 feet where 25 feet is required. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the Town Law of Hyde Park, zoning law section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. Number one, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby projects, properties, sorry. The current two doors for egress are limiting for the size of the home. The new deck addition with the new set of stairs will be a complement with current zoning regulations and allow for an additional point of egress. The proposed project will enhance both the access and safety to the property. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicants cannot be achieved by some other placement feasible for the applicants to pursue other than an area variance. The applicants are seeking an area variance because the topography of the property severely limits the possible locations where the stair may be safely installed. Placement at the northwest corner is the optimal solution given the property's elevation. Number two...number three, actually. The requested variance is numerically substantial. The variance will change the permitted side yard setback from 25 feet to 21 feet, which is a decrease of 16 percent. Any impacts of this encroachment would be approximately equal to the house itself, and any detriment to the neighborhood is outweighed by the benefits to the applicants. Number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. Decreasing the side yard setback requirement allow a variance of four feet, so a side deck extension can be built, will not have a negative impact on the existing neighborhood. The deck will not impact the physical or visual environment since there is already a deck on the property. And number five, the difficulties are self-created. It further resolve that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance subjected to the following conditions. Number one, payment of all fees and escrows.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes. Mr. Agrawal?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We look forward to your deck.
Wonderful and sunset.
When is the party?
Every night.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Hope that works out for you.
Just a question. Now, now that this has been approved, do I now just go to the building department to get a permit? Is that how this works? I mean...
I think the next step is, don't we do a planning for waiver of site plan?
Oh, I mean, I have no idea. I mean, okay. So, to whom do I address that for? Do you contact us or...
Uh, I think when the initial denial was done, there may have been some paperwork in there about that. If not, just contact the office and follow the sample.
Okay, Ted. Great. Okay. Thank you, folks.
Good luck. Thank you. Happy holiday to you.
Thanks.
Our next agenda item is the Camp Victory Lake, 21-15Z. We have seen this gentleman an awful lot. We're delighted to see him back.
Good to see you guys again. Been way too long.
Yes. I would entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing for Camp Victory Lake. Is there a motion?
There's a motion, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
When was the last time I was here? I think it was July.
Oh, yeah.
Even longer than that.
Yeah, it was warm. It was warm.
Righty.
Okay. And...
All righty.
The variance before us, as you have discussed before, are twofold. One is a variance for the height of the building to add, I think, three feet above what the limit is?
Twelve and a half.
Twelve and a half or more than that. Okay. And we've looked at that. And the second is to have a limit on the location or the creek...
The stream encroachment.
...within 10 feet of the creek, and you want to go within...the variance of the...yeah, okay. That'll help me if I can talk. Change stream corridor setback from 100 to zero feet from Fall Creek crossing. And that's primarily because you have to have the crossing going from one part of the property to the other, and that's a road that's being reconstructed. There's already an existing bridge there, and you are basically going to build and widen that.
Yeah, we have to widen a couple of extra feet. So, because we're getting into the stream corridor, that brings the encroachment down to zero feet.
Okay. And we have had discussions about the handling of the runoff water in the parking lots and from the building, and you've indicated that you have all of the...you've allocated enough space and areas to absorb the waters off of the building and off of the parking lot so that the creek itself would not be inundated with that.
Correct. We have a full stormwater management plan, pollution prevention plan, SWIP, prepared for the site. I believe Tad and Pete from the planning board have all reviewed it. A few minor tweaks, but overall, very good, and no stormwater really affecting the creek.
Okay. And we've received...counsel, we've received from...what did we receive it from?
From the planning board?
From the planning board, just recently?
Yes. They thought...sorry, they finished their seeker review, and they issued a negative declaration that there would be no significant environmental impact. So, that's what this board was waiting on to continue with the review.
Okay. Are there any other...let me ask you first, is there...are there any changes since we've last talked in terms of where we're at here?
So, the only changes that did occur were for the site's entrance is, and that's kind of what we were doing with DPW. We are reworking it, getting everything sightlines and all of that squared away. We got that squared away last week, and so that's what led to our neg deck.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Moss, is there anything from your end of the...
No.
Okay. Board members? Yes.
I have a question. So, just to refresh my memory, the height is the...of the building is an average height?
It's average height, taken from the mean of the entrance for the building. So, just again, to give everyone a recap, because it's been a while. Our building has two entrances, one in the northern section of the site. Actually, that's not it. Sorry. Our building has two entrances. One is this northern entrance right here, which is at an elevation of 297, and then a upper elevation entrance, which is at 113. So, the way the building height is calculated, you get the average of all the sides of the building, which is 307.35 based off our calculations, and you measure that to the midpoint of the roof, which would be right here. And that's what causes our building height to be 47 and a half feet. Only 35 is permitted. So, that's where the 12 and a half foot building variance is.
What's...I don't see average, but where's...what's the height of the highest point?
The height of the highest point? I don't have the height of the highest point. It might be on here, but I know the entire construction height is 63.63 feet, three inches. But what should be noted is that this is sunken down into the hillside, so this is kind of our design point, that we are carving out a portion of it so that it sits lower and that it's less visible from the roadways.
Other questions? But it's not invisible from the roadways.
Not invisible, but there is...you can see a little bit of the tops from the tree lines. I believe I submitted building elevations in the past, photo renderings.
Right.
Kind of giving a nice...the most visible side of the building would be coming up or going south down north Quaker, but what we're doing instead for...to kind of mitigate that potential impact to the view would be planting a lot of evergreen screening, so stays green all year round, so it really does buffer the view.
Right now, it's seasonal use?
Mm-hmm.
So, with this building, would it make it so it's all year round use?
There is a minor increase in the number of events that we were thinking. Again, most of their...all...most of their activities are summer. They have a summer camp. They have lots of summer kind of conferences where they bring people together. So, if anything, it's really more of a refinement of the existing facilities where these events are held outside, now they're going to be held inside within the building. So, there could be a minor increase, which we have documented on our planning board items, kind of...trying to think. I don't have the number offhand, but it's a very marginal increase we could expect, if any.
In the number of events?
In the number of events. Yes, but not the size of the event.
What's the current maximum capacity for Camp Victory Lake?
We have it...we have the maximum capacity calculated at, I believe it was 5,400 is what we have for the site.
That's what it's going to be, 5,000?
No, that's what it currently is. That's what we expect to have people-wise.
And then when this is built, it's going to be the same capacity?
This is going to have a...that's...so, the 5,000 is the maximum event size that we have for the site. The building itself will be able to handle 4,000, maybe a little less, about 50 less, which, again, most of the events are within that size. They're within three...or, sorry, most of the events are much smaller, between 200 to 500 offhand. I have it all in our seeker documentation, but every couple of...during the summer, I believe they have two major events, which range from that 3 to 5,000 people attendance, which that's the biggest events that are held on-site. So, we were trying to get all those people inside a building, be a little less disruptive.
All right. So, this structure is not going to change the amount of people that can be on the grounds?
Correct.
So, traffic is going to stay the same?
Correct. We have a...we had a traffic report done by Creighton Manning. That's actually what led to some of the reconfigurations of the entrances to really refine and kind of streamline how people come into the site, because they had found that this entrance is actually...does not have sufficient sightline, so we're proposing to move it about, I believe it's 40 feet to the northeast. So, right, this is where it is currently, so we're having it here. And then this road was also found to have insufficient sightlines, so we're moving that 30 feet to the west.
Which will one of those be the majority...the primary entrance?
Yes. Primary entrance would be the first one that I discussed.
Which road are you moving? What's wrong? You said you're moving a road.
Oh, oh, sorry. This existing driveway, West Victory Lake Road. So, where it's...where it is...the entrance is currently located is around here, so we had to move it about 30 feet this direction.
Isn't it off Crum Elbow?
Yeah.
So, where's Crum Elbow on that?
That's wrong.
This one's Crum Elbow.
Okay. Okay.
Speaking about events, what do you think on an average event with a good capacity, how many buses usually sort of arrive there, would you say?
I'm not sure the exact number of buses, but what we have factored in was about 20 new gravel bus places. That's actually what the stream corridor encroachment is, because we're widening the road to be able to accommodate those buses.
Right.
It's a summer camp, so mostly young children, right?
Mostly young children during the summer camp, so Monday through Friday, it's a sleepaway camp. During the...because it's a Seventh Day Adventist, what they do is they have a seasonal conference where they invite other churches from the northeastern region to come to the site and attend services and things like that.
So, it's a mixture of like cars and buses that...
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because 4,000 people, typical bus holds like, what, 56 people? That's like 70, over 71 buses. It's a lot of buses.
Mm-hmm. Which, again, what we...so, we have the dedicated gravel bus parking, and we have numerous new car, and we have a...so, in trying to eliminate extra impervious, we have grass overflow parking to accommodate that.
I've...I used to live nearby, and I've driven by the camp for the last 30 years in the summertime, numerous times when I'm going out towards the county. And at times when it's busy, there's a lot of traffic as it stands. So, let's say there's 4,000 people, because it's a nice indoor facility, it could be pouring rain, and people...more people will come because it's indoor. So, let's say four people per car. That's...that's even at 2,000...if 2,000 people come, that's 500 cars. If 4,000 people come, that's 1,000 cars. We'll find out if it's right. So, whether it's buses or cars, where are all those people going to park? And if there's overflow parking on the grass, in the summertime, it's going to be...grass gets muddy, and that's going to create, in my opinion, a huge mess and a traffic nightmare. It'll be like going to Renegade Stadium or something else where there's just a lot of people trying to get in and out. Because I did go by there a lot of times.
Yep. No, so our grass overflow parking is over in this direction. I believe the last time we were in front of the planning board, they had similar concerns about the parking. They're okay with the grass, but they're going to want us to do, make sure that it's not going to be rutted. So, typically, summertime, drier vents, less...
Yeah. I would say this, though, Jim and Paul, those elements, which are important, I think were considered by the planning board, and at this point, they're not a part of what we're here to approve. I think we're making an assumption that you are able to continue to handle the same volume coming in that you've handled in the past with improved sites for parking of the buses and the cars, as well as the entrances. Is that fair to say?
I would say so.
Okay. Okay. All right. Other questions on this?
I do have one, just to come back to an issue that was discussed, I believe, last time. The application was before the board, and the member who inquired about it is unfortunately not here, but I would be remiss if I didn't follow up. As to alternatives with the building height, because 12 and a half feet is somewhat substantial for a height when it's on the average, and I believe last time it was discussed that it was done to create the vaulting feel inside of the church, but the seating didn't necessarily go up that high, but there...was there any consideration to changing that, to perhaps trying to lower?
So, there was balcony seating, and we talked to the architects. They said they could do a building like that, but for the amount of time, money, and effort that's gone into designing this, they really want something that's going to look good and not just like a...basically a Costco-style building where it's just a box. So, that is kind of what we're doing there as well.
Okay. I remember it was brought up a while ago about, if there ever was a fire, how high the ladders could go. Did we ever get an answer on?
I don't...offhand, I do not know, but this whole emergency pull-off lane down here was actually done. I had met with the fire department. We discussed ladder heights and how the swing of the truck, and showed them this design. He's like, yes, we would like a pull-off lane, all of that. So, what we did is, we had the pull-off lane, and we extended it a little past the building. So, if the truck needed to swing a ladder to that side of the building, they could accommodate that as well.
That's good to know.
And then another one of the comments one of the board members had made was...sorry, did I answer the question?
I don't think you answered my question.
Oh, sorry.
I thought about the height of the structure. Can the ladder...can the fire truck...
Yes.
The fire department did go out, and they made a change in the...in the site to accommodate the truck could move further back behind that building so they could reach the backside.
Yeah. So, their primary concern was more access to the sides of the buildings. They didn't really say too much about the top, because I believe their ladder trucks have a 60-foot height, maybe 80. Not sure offhand, but they were more concerned about getting the truck to have access to at least three sides of the structure. And then off of north Quaker, they can also get up on elevation over here, because it's...as we're...as I said, this is kind of sunken into the bank side of a hill, so if a truck needed to, they could pull off north Quaker and then swing the ladder truck and get over the building. So, I think that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then one of the other things that we adjusted was, previously, there were cabins. So, right here, there's a couple of cabins. We walked the site, we saw it. We were initially proposing them to go up here, so they looked out over Victory Lake. I believe one of the board members was concerned about water quality and overlook and erosion, so we took those cabins and are now moving them to a lower area. It's outside of the stream corridor encroachment zone.
Right.
And honestly, I think it probably makes a little more sense in this spot than trying to squeeze them up there on the ridge. So, that was definitely a positive.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Okay. Any other questions? We did have, as counsel has mentioned, Hyde Park Planning Board has adopted a sequer determination of negative declaration indicating that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. Other...do we have any other questions? Ms. Moss, anything?
No.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. We do have a resolution here. Read this. Resolution to grant the area variance to Camp Victory Lake, 2277 Crum Elbow Road, Hyde Park, New York, dated December 15th, 2022, resolution 21-15Z. Whereas the applicant, Camp Victory Lake, submitted an application for area variance to increase the maximum building height and reduce the stream corridor setback at property owned by Northeastern Conference Corporation located at 277 Crum Elbow Road, identified as tax parcel number 6265-04-630350 in the Green Belt Zoning District, and whereas the proposed project is depicted on a plan entitled Camp Victory Lake, prepared by Rihanna Engineering Design, dated December 22nd, 2020, and revised April 19th, 2021, and significantly revised February 2nd, 2022, and whereas the applicant seeks the following area variances: to permit, one, to permit a building height of 47.5 feet for construction of a stadium-style sanctuary space, where a maximum height of 35 feet is permitted for a building pursuant to zoning law section 108-5-1.15 bulk regulations, and number two, to permit a stream corridor setback of zero feet from the Fall Kilk Creek for a stream crossing and other disturbance, whereas where a setback of 100 feet is required pursuant to zoning law section 108-4.3G2A, and whereas a duly public notice hearing was opened on September 22nd, 21, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the Town Law of Height and Hyde Park zoning law section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. Number one, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The proposed building height variance will not create a visible difference to the surrounding area as the structure will be well-screened and graded. Additionally, most of the new building will be constructed into the surrounding topography. The construction of this facility will also allow the applicant to hold large events indoors as opposed to outdoors, thereby reducing negative externalities. The stream corridor setback will likewise not cause an undesirable change or detriment to the surrounding area as the project is being used in a similar manner as it has been for over 50 years. There is already considerable disturbance in the proposed area... There is already considerable disturbance in the proposed area, including permanent structures and recreation areas. Adjacent properties also show evidence of site improvements and structures within the stream corridor. Further, the stream crossing improvements will reduce the possibility of negative stormwater effects downstream. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the requested variance. The proposed building height variance will allow the applicant to accommodate large events for over 3,900 people within one structure using stadium-style seating, instead of causing significant more site disturbance by constructing multiple smaller structures to accommodate the same number of attendees or by continuing to host the event outdoors. Initially, the applicant sought to construct on the northern area of the site. However, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation raised concerns about the Blanding's Turtle habitat on the north side of the lake, making the proposed location on the south the most feasible location. The stream corridor setback is necessary to accommodate the required parking minimums and allow improvements to the stream crossing while still preserving the sensitive habitat to the north. The applicant's first proposal shown on the original site plan included relocating bunk cabins into the stream corridor. In their amended site plan, the applicant has decided to relocate the cabins completely outside the stream corridor, therefore removing part of the variance. The variance is still required, however, to accommodate the required amount of parking. Number three, the requested variances are numerically substantial. If granted, the permitted height for the building will increase by 12.5 feet, an increase of approximately 35%. In addition, the requested stream corridor setback to zero feet will constitute a 100% decrease. However, the zero-foot setback is for stream crossing improvements, which is partially covered by a DEC permit. The requested variances, number four, the requested variances will likely not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. Allowing the building heights to be increased beyond what is permitted by the zoning law will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, as the applicants are required to prepare and adhere to a stormwater pollution prevention plan. There are significant preventative measures which will mitigate any related environmental impacts from stormwater runoff. Visual impacts of the building are minimal, as the project is built into a hillside, graded and well-screened with landscaping. The applicant has submitted graphic renderings of what the project will look like from Quaker Lane, Crum Elbow, and intersections that illustrate the same. Finally, having a building with the capacity to accommodate gatherings indoors will improve the auditory experience of neighbors during events. Allowing a variance of the stream corridor setback for stream crossing improvements may positively affect the environment, as the improved culverts will better allow rainwater to move under the existing bridge. As with the building, the parking lot will also have adequate stormwater treatment facilities as outlined in their stormwater pollution prevention plan that will mitigate pollution. Number five, difficulties are self-created, as the applicant has owned the property for over 50 years and now seeks to redevelop the site. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section 108-335F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance. Otherwise, the variance is revoked. Number two, payment of all fees and escrow. I would entertain a second for this motion, resolution?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the...
Yes. Mr. Agrawal?
No.
Mr. Donnelly?
No.
Vice Chair Bowen?
No.
Chairman McNary?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, we'll need to go from here.
Is there anything that I could do or the applicant could do to kind of sway your guys' votes on this? Or what's the major concern, I guess?
It's very large. I'm sorry? The height. But you know it's going to be built into the land, so the height is not... You're not seeing 47 feet on Quaker or Crum Elbow.
Wasn't it... Didn't somebody...
I would just say the public hearing was closed. You've taken your vote. That vote has to be supported. They're entitled to contest that vote. We can look into the option of whether there is any cause for a rehearing, but that is it. I would caution against a continued discussion, because you've made your positions clear.
I would agree.
Well, I guess then, next steps for me would be...
You could submit an amended application, perhaps with less of a variance request. I think that what has been made clear is that the height is more of the concern, but outside of that, then I would leave it to the applicant and your counsel to determine the most appropriate path forward.
Okay. All righty. Well, I guess that's it, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out here and listening to me. Thank you.
We have a third resolution here for releasing escrow for the completed projects dated December 15. Resolution 12-22E. Jim, you have that? Would you read that, please?
Sure. Resolution, releasing escrow for completed projects, dated today, resolution 12-2022-E. Whereas the following zoning board of appeals projects have been closed and deemed complete by the board's legal counsel, and whereas the remaining escrow balance is to be released to the appropriate party to close the amount. Now therefore be it resolved that zoning board of appeals release the following escrow. Project 21-16Z Nishwat, total of $1,837.50. Project 22-10Z Culinary Institute, $164. 21-19Z Rite Aid, amount of $248. And project number 22-01Z Speedway, the amount of $24.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We need a vote on this?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. Mash and motion opposed. We have a motion for adjournment?
A motion for adjournment?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Are we... Are you off?